I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so, um... We have, um... Do we have any questions?
This time.
Okay. Do we have any public comment? Is this the type of talk about... No, you're an agenda item.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Um, okay, so that would be none. So, non-resident student applications?
Okay, we have had two applications that we've received in the office. In both cases, the parents have stated that they're unable to attend today. And I told them that on new applications, the board likes to see those individuals' presence for discussion on their students. In both cases, the students are in good standing and are strong applicants for attendance at our school. One of the gals, um, the mother was here at the last four B and stood up and spoke. And so, as I stated to them, the board has the liberty to table these for to take action if it so chooses. But the practice has been if they're not here, they're tabled.
I remember that lady, Mrs. Logan. So, I make a motion to accept a visa G's non-resident student application.
Second. Because we won't be out in the meeting now.
This is a hot time.
So, discussion. Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I also make a motion to accept Kayla Winston's non-resident student application.
Sir.
Discussion?
She has a sibling that's already been out. It's already been here without district acceptance.
Um, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. So you guys will notify them that we've had...
Yeah, we'll notify them.
Alright. Alright, so foreign exchange student?
Okay, we have a foreign exchange request. Now, just so you're aware, um, the school district normally does not take more than two foreign exchange students from the exchange services. We've already filled up the slots that we typically give out. But last year, as you recall, there was a fee for an additional person to come from Three Eagle River due to special conditions that had existed in their existing school district. And the board does have at its discretion to go ahead and allow, if it so chooses, more than the four allotted. One of the things that'll be faced with these foreign exchange programs is that the placement advisors are pretty aggressive in trying to place foreign exchange students. So, um, with that, today, we have with us the NIs who have special circumstance on a foreign exchange student that has been down in Hamilton and has not had a very successful experience and has been replaced with the NIs and would like that child to continue a foreign exchange experience in the area. So, the NIs are in district parents and they are here today to speak with you regarding the circumstances involved in this child.
Kristen, thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. McGee, for introducing really well. So, how do we start this? We happened to be asked by a member of my church to help out for a very short time with a student or a child from South Korea who was down in Hamilton. She was placed with a one-member family and that person was transferred out. But because, I think she was a little lonesome and didn't get a lot of that in-family discussion, she had made a request to actually go back to South Korea. And, but she had this camp to go to, so she was placed with us for the interim until her camp, which that's why she's not here today, because she's at camp in North Carolina. And, um, I have to say, we've fallen in love with this child. She is amazing. She's just a delight and has been a great addition. From the time that we've received her, we've seen her English just really improve. And about three days into her experience with us, she asked if we would consider serving as her host family for the next six months. And we talked about it and thought that would be a great experience for our kids and would like to do that for her, not even knowing that there was a quota. And, um, so we would really like you guys to consider this. Couple things to keep in mind is it will just be for six months. It won't be for the whole year. Students from South Korea tend to come in in January and leave in January of the next year because of the way that their school system is set up. So that's why you're seeing just this six months. What do you like to add? I kind of had a loss of words.
I think it's to the point where if we can't get this done, she is gonna have to go back, is what's sad. And she's very excited to go there.
So, I guess we'd be available for questions if you guys have questions for us.
Sadie tutoring her, tutoring her on her English?
She is. If any of you know my daughter?
Seven.
She's been, um, yeah, poor Darwin doesn't have a choice but to interact. And they're practicing on second grade books so she can improve her fluency and well and so on. And I've been pretty impressed with this, this group that, um, what is it called? The Education, Travel and Culture. To increase her fluency, we, they are working with us to put together a plan that she expects she can be very successful entering into fall semester here.
And her parents are gonna pay for a tutor throughout the school year as well.
And it's not that she's not that bad at speaking. It's just she, given that she's been in Montana for six months, you would expect her to be slightly more ahead than she is.
And what grade would she be in?
She would be a senior, but that does not mean that she would have to take senior classes.
She would junior, take the classes, yeah, that's what we do.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I guess we need a motion so we can have discussion?
I'll make a motion to accept...
Please say her name.
Darwin.
Darwin Sale. Sale, as a foreign exchange student for the... So it wouldn't be the whole 2013-14 school year. It would just basically be...
First semester.
Her first semester.
Okay. Discussion?
What was the, is the normal procedure when, um, like the family transfers like that? Is it normal that the exchange student goes with them or...?
That's a really good question. I, I don't think so.
Why didn't she, I mean, so why did she, why did that not happen? What was the circumstance? Was she going to go with family too? Where did they move to?
We got no...
We don't know that either. And it was just, it was one lady, not married, no kids. And it didn't sound like she was even offered that opportunity.
They don't usually transfer states because it changes their visa status.
The state does?
No. If a student is gonna transfer to a different state, it changes their visa status. Those students, if they wanna travel in the U.S., have to get a signed waiver from the school that allows them to move to different states to do things, to go travel.
So, what's, why do we set, what's the reason behind maxing out of four for the class?
Well, it's just a number that has been out there for, since before I've been here in terms of managing the number of foreign exchange students that are in the building. Feeling that, you know, if you get four foreign exchange students in the building, you're providing the grade levels, not exposure, the experience to foreign exchange. That it's beneficial to school and to students. Not a attraction from the learning environment. But a lot of times, these kids will be facing challenges. They're broken English and stuff. So, it's a limited difference that, meaning it's...
To how, her English is how good, music and...
Written, it's exceptional. Verbal, um, there are some challenges, but culturally, we have told her, you're not, you know, you need to ask questions. If you, you're not gonna make anyone feel bad asking these questions. We, we speak with her just fine. But like I said, like my wife said, the last couple of weeks, just being with our family, she's gotten even better. And we are gonna try some things this summer to get her English better as well as a tutor through the school year.
So I get my last question. You mentioned that last time, there was a, I believe it was last year, was it not? This year, when they did ask for a foreign exchange student, wasn't she from Lebanon? Was that just a few meetings ago?
Yeah.
So she was having issues up there and is, and your recommendation, and she wanted to finish the last two months. Your recommendation at that time was not to, and your recommendation for this time is? What was, what's your reason behind that?
Well, my recommendation is to follow the consistency of the pattern of the board. The board at that time had made the decision that was willing to accept those conditions. And so, I believe the board is following the pattern here, but I'm willing to support it. Okay, that's all I got.
Are you folks picking up Korean faster than she's picking up?
No. No.
No, but we're learning a lot about our culture and that's a wonderful experience for our family.
I guess.
Plus, she's a good cook.
There you go. Mr. Baskin? Any comments?
No. You know, we talked earlier and I told them that we had the limit, the quota, we had met it, you know. And so, I think it's fine to bring her in. I've talked to other schools that have gotten away from their quotas, that they just enjoy having the culture come into their schools. So I wouldn't even mind seeing that go away down the road. The one thing I do pay attention to, just so you know, is when I get the app, and we have a waiting list of applicants right now. Um, I've had, I have three companies on hold wanting more kids to come in. Trying to find host families is always a challenge, so we never know about that. But I look at the age of the students coming in. We had three applicants earlier this year where the students who wanted to come in were 15, which I think is too young to do that. I just don't think it works well. So I look for that late 16 into the 18 age group for kids coming in. They seem to be able to adjust better to what's going on, a little bit more mature. They're able to connect with people in our building a little better instead of just migrating together with other foreign exchange kids. So it seems to work out pretty good. So, we look at those types of things when we're, you know, when I'm screening applicants. And I talk to the coordinators when they're contacting me and let them know, you know, their concerns. And they have no issue with those types of concerns at all.
Okay, so any further discussion?
Well, it seems like these folks are going out of their way to solve each important situation. And I think in school, we could go on a runway a little bit, so, not bad, unfortunately.
Okay, so call for a question. All those in favor of accepting her?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys can stay or you can go, whatever you'd like. Alright, so, old business?
Fifth grade teaching position. We talked a little bit about the needs at the fifth grade level for this next round of school year. And one of the things that we are faced with at the fifth grade is that although we have, you know, 53 students, 54 students in that room, in that grade level, we could do with two teachers and as we did in fourth grade and be just under the state accreditation level. But what we discovered during the course of this past year is that in each grade level, each year the kids go through, they have their own unique needs, their own unique challenges. We, we say the grade level in itself has its own type of personality. And we recognize with this group of students that there are some things that are unique to it that provide some challenges for, for the instructors as they work with the students. One of them is that there's a disproportionate share of male to female in the, in the grade level. And that dynamic itself puts some of the female students in a little bit of a disadvantage. And so, if you split that up, you put a few females in one room and a few females in another room, you end up with, you know, a domineering male environment that is difficult for the children as they're in there. Secondly, we've seen, you know, not that the kids in the grade level are bad. I call them, I call it a situation where the students are more like a throw of red horse. A little high strung, a little bit, you know, more zest for life. They're gonna live life a little bit more to its fullest. And when the students do that, it does present challenges for the teacher in terms of helping to redirect that energy towards, you know, sitting in a chair and listening to instruction and following the teacher's direction. And it's not that the kids are bad, it's just who they are and the group that they exist in. So having understood that, really seeing the example of what it was like this past year, we came to the conclusion that it's an issue we have to take a look at. We have to study and we have to understand and see what it would be best for the children. As a result, one of the things that we see could be very beneficial to the children is that if we reduced the class sizes down for those students and divided the group up by three instead of two. Granted, it's not going to do a whole lot for the female population because now you're still gonna have probably the same percentage of female to male in the room just at a smaller group. But it does allow the teacher to have more opportunity, more chance to engage situations that they just can't because when you get up into a larger number of students, when you have 25-plus students in your room, as a teacher, you have a lot going on. A lot of distractions, a lot of need, a lot of things that you have to be looking for, a lot of things that you have to address. So you don't have that time to really engage situations that you couldn't necessarily engage. And that is that relationship between the genders. Because quite honestly, it's not something we focus on. We tend to focus on reading, writing, and arithmetic more than those social and emotional issues that we department confronted. So having seen that, and even the parents themselves have come forward and have spoken to us about this need that they see and they would like to, to see the district try to do something to address it. We have spoken with the parents and quite honestly, it's a very cohesive group. I would say out of the 50 parents, you've got 45 plus that are very, very committed to something happening here. And, you know, we're committed to trying to make the best environment possible. And one of the things that we're faced with is we've been looking to get a budget finance committee meeting together to really dig into next year's budget to discover whether or not we can actually afford this position. And the fact of the matter is, we've got things built into the budget right now in terms of a potential SRO program and a potential more help of the computer for Mr. Jarvie. That these things, I, I believe, are very beneficial to the system as a whole. But it goes a little bit away from the core value of what we really are here for, which is the education of students. And so, you know, there, there is room that I believe in the budget to accommodate this need. You know, and to make it where we could open up the position and move forward if we so desire. So, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Backus, since she is the administrator, and let her add anything that she may at this point, looking back to this. And I believe we have a couple of parents here tonight that also have fifth grade students that are very invested in this. They may want to speak also.
Well, I think, Mr. McGee, you covered the points that I would brought up also. You know, I think it's, we were at 28 and 28 at the end of the year. And it was packed in there, high energy. You know, it becomes more of a focus on classroom management and not so much time being able to be devoted to individual students, so...
And another thing to add, once you hit that 29th student, you're obligated to put it, put instructional support in there. So then you're gonna have to hire somebody to come in and be an aide in there for somebody else today. And that's just by the accreditation law.
I want to open a fifth grade teaching position for the 2014 school year.
How about... Discussion? We have room, we have another room.
Yes, we do.
Talking about question?
What happens for the teacher at the end of the year?
Well, the other grade level coming up, in the fifth grade that is currently in fourth grade, will have more than enough students to, um, there'll be a need for three fifth grade teachers next year. As this group goes up into sixth grade and stuff, we'll be taking a look at the sixth grade staffing to see whether or not there'll be the need for change in staffing levels at the middle school level next year.
Is our enrollment starting to grow a little?
It had a little, little growth last year. Just, it's really, I believe there's a leveling effect that you've seen in the last couple of years. You know, we saw, back at about 2009, 2010, we saw a significant decrease. And I think that that was in relation to the economy. You know, you, you ended up in that timeframe back in 2008. A lot of jobs leave the valley. And a testament to it is, I think, Mel's industry. Just look at the wood mills up and down the valley and the log home builders up and down the valley. I think you saw a lot of them, you know, shut the doors. And so, we saw a lot of jobs leave, yet, um, you know, at that time, some of the enrollment also left. You know, one of the things that we did have, quite a few parents that worked out there at Stone Container. You know, we have quite a few parents out here living here that have worked there. And, you know, they've moved on. Some very skilled laborers that could go to other parts of the country and find work. But I think at this point, we've seen that economic downturn. And I think our economy now has adjusted to that. We're, not that we're growing and we're in great shape or anything, but I think we're at a, at a level just rolling right along, not growing, not declining anymore.
So you're saying, you mentioned the SRO and the computer. Are you saying possibly cutting that out to make room?
Yeah, if I, if it was my recommendation, my recommendation would be to support the instructional integrity for the students' education. That's what our tradition here is.
So in essence, you're kinda making room for it in your bucket by not bringing in the SRO, which was about a third, $25,000 to $30,000 dollar. What was, you're saying Mr. Jarvie was looking for help in the computer?
Yeah, and we have a, we have a library position that we have to fill because of state accreditation. And so, one of the things with library media that we're intending to do to address in the budget is that the new librarian will be doing more technology side of, of instruction, which means they can work more within the structure of our, our network. One of the things that we're hoping that the new librarian does is that they teach the kids how to go out and do appropriate searches on the internet. And when you go out and you're, you're doing research for a paper or something, there's a lot of garbage sites out there. And what kids need to learn, one of the skills that we have to help them to understand is how to discern between what's quality information and what's garbage. Because if you're doing a research report, you wanna make sure you're using quality research that backs up what you're doing so that you're getting good sound logic reasons. And that's what the position will do. And in working with that, that means that person's gonna be going in, doing a lot of work with kids in terms of, of that kind of support. Then in the classroom, what this, this position will also do in support of classroom is to go into, let's say, Mr. Edgar is doing a world history project where the kids are studying Egypt and doing some reports. This position can come into his class and support it by showing the kids how to go out and do some quality searches for finding good information about completing the assignments that are there. And then helping the teachers in terms of them becoming more with the kids in the library. So it's gonna be a lot more technology-oriented position in terms of how do you use the worldwide web to embrace it and utilize it. Because quite honestly, we've got a shelf back there of world book encyclopedias. And it's hoop for us to buy those anymore because that stuff's out on the net. And we can get it on the net. And the same with maps. We don't, we don't go out and buy map books anymore because you can go to Google Earth, you know, find stuff. But we need the kids to know how to utilize the technology to do that kind of stuff. So I think in our budget, by reinventing and utilizing resources in, in what I'd call a smarter way, we, we can open up some opportunities in the budget to fill this position.
How many fourth graders are coming up and what's the size of class that they're holding current?
Well, it's 28 and 28 at the end of the year, so it's 56. And I believe right now, we're at 53 or 54. So at the end of the year, we were very close to violation of state accreditation standards.
So there's 53 fourth graders coming up to 50?
It was 56 at the end of the year.
Is it 56?
It was, we were at 28 and 28 at the end of the year.
Okay.
That's without any you. And I don't help any reading.
And then we still don't know, at the beginning of the year, we might get some parents that can move into the district that have fifth grader. We're not allowing out-of-district students in the grade level. Because we just feel like we're capped.
Yeah, you have registration in August, right?
Yes, we do.
How many do we, I guess I'll get the math on it. We're just allowed...
How many fifth, fourth to fifth graders, we just already did on the last one.
Is that a problem? We're not supposed to be hiring teachers if we have too many?
Yeah, we will move kids if we're hiring teachers. We'll, we'll notify out-of-district parents at that grade level for hiring new teachers, that we've capped the grade level.
That's why you're not accepting, that's why we're not accepting.
So we'll, we'll accept no more out-of-district students?
In that grade level?
For that grade level until when?
Until the issue goes away. Because, because if it gets to the point where it's tough, the thing that I look at is, I'm not gonna tell a parent, "Oh, come on, out of district, come in here, you're the 20, you're the 56th person." And then I get a 57th and I'm having to hire a new personnel. And then two months later, tell them, "We need to leave." We did tell the parents, we're just too close to being full. And so essentially, once we hit about 52 students in grade level, we're not even considering the applications at that point. We tell the parents at that point, it's full. We're in a problem if we try to push this forward. We could be in a month or two after we complete, and then it's not fair for your student to be yo-yo between schools. Not only consistency.
My only issue, I understand all this. My only issue is that, uh, back to the budget, I, I've yet to, I haven't really seen that. So, I mean, again, I'm basing a decision to open something up on not, not having a lot of information in front of me, so... I'll just make that clear. Being, just wanna let you know that I haven't, I haven't actually seen the budget itself.
Does anyone have copies of the budget?
No, we're, the one we're working on, we're trying to get, I mean, we're trying to get a meeting for this week, but we've had some problems with some general vouchers that have been entered into the system. Mrs. Morgan has been trying to work with Black Mountain Software to get that situation corrected. Situation we have right now is a little bit distorted. We don't want that official up wrong, like we want to be representative of the whole community. So we're hoping, you know, I would really like for the week after the fourth to set a budget finance committee meeting and go through and really, you know, have a budget committee take a serious look at where our budget is next year. And just so you know, we're, we're trying to make sure we're utilizing that budget finance software that Black Mountain has for us.
What is the salary of a fifth grade teacher?
A new fifth grade teacher is coming in at about $32,000.
Would you add on to, does that include benefits or is that base?
That's base. It's part of the benefit. The benefit would be about $4,000. And that doesn't include retirement, I don't have that. And that doesn't include repairment, I don't have to draw up the cost.
Alright, so any, um, any further discussion? Yes?
Hi, my name's Delaine. Got, anybody that doesn't know me, we have two boys in fifth grade. Um, I'll just add, I mean, I'm sure it's not gonna be the deal breaker or anything. My son gets good grades, he's almost all A's, some B's. He doesn't have any behavioral issues. You can ask Vicky Cornish, he'll attest to that. Um, so he would be fine if we went with two again, um, but I know he could do, he could be more, he could get pushed more. But there are kids in both of those classes that I'm not sure are gonna be fine, and they're not gonna be ready for middle school. Um, I've helped out in there and there's kids that struggle with basic double-digit adding and, um, just, they're just, all just really, really great kids, but they're just, they're just torn, they don't know what to do with themselves, but they've got all this energy and the ones that wanna give up just don't try because then, well, they don't have to be held accountable, it's maybe a deal. And either makes them act out more or they shut down more, and I know that's across both classrooms. I had all sorts of things to say, of course, now I can't remember because I was a dang nervous. I think that, that just, I think the lower classroom would make it a lot easier for a teacher to help identify some of these problems, to push the advanced kids forward and to help bring up some of the kids instead of just trying to hold everybody down.
On an emotional level as well as academic, I believe.
Yeah, it's not just grades, it's just everybody trying to contain themselves, it's just so much going on in there.
I think that the grade level should be smaller classes.
I know we're worried about if we can afford it, but I'm wondering if we can't afford not to. We might end up paying a price a little later down the line and it might be different. That would be a bummer for any of those kids to have missed out.
Yes. Uh, my son's teacher said that she loved the class and she was impressed on how brilliant they were and she wished she could spend more time doing projects, but the number of students inhibited her from being able to do more exploration and, uh, different projects that you could do with a smaller number of kids rather than almost thirty kids. So they, I know that they, the teachers felt like they had to hold back this year with what they were able to do with those numbers. So, thank you.
Alright, so...
I did one more thing, I, I'd like, sorry, one more. I, I understand, I totally agree with you, whether we can or can't afford it, we probably should, but my, my only issue was, I, I see there's a, a need here, I totally agree, it looks like it, but my problem as a trustee is that I don't know whether I can or can't afford it without numbers, so that's my only issue with opening it. It's not whether it's, it needs to be opened, it's that I financially do not know personally whether we have that money or not without looking at it, so I just wanted to add that.
Alright, so call for a question? All those in favor of opening the third, fifth grade teaching position? Opposed?
How many fourth grade teachers do we have?
Two right now. Two right now, but we have a retirement, it's gonna fill the fourth grade. We have a fifth grade teacher that retired.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So with the new teacher that was coming in, it's gonna be placed in the fourth grade because we had the need for three fourth grade teachers there. And we had, we'd only had two fifth grade, and so I'm opening this spot up.
Okay, so, um, on to personnel.
We have, uh, district office staff, contracts that, uh...
Let's just, let's back up and say on the certified staff, we're gonna table that, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, certified staff, um, there's a few things that I need to, to deal with. There's a librarian position that's not here, there's a softball coaching position that we still need to put out there. So what I'm gonna ask the board to do is to table the hiring of these, uh, fourth and fifth grade teacher positions until a special board meeting. Um, you know, I'd like to see whether or not we can have a special board meeting called for around the thirteenth of July, that Wednesday or Thursday of that week, and we can do some board, board membership training at that time and take care of these hirings at that time.
I'm sorry, but I don't understand, what's that, that's good, why we don't, why you're not going out for a fifth grade move?
Because I'd like to include the librarian in as part of that hiring discussion at that time.
So that night, you're gonna move it so we can hire a fourth grade, a fifth grade, and a librarian?
Correct, and then a possible kindergarten teacher at the same time.
This is July twelfth and thirteenth?
That week.
Okay.
On the day of that date, that week, do a board membership, uh, special meeting, and then do a personnel section at that end.
That allows us to have that, um, availability of having the names and everything right for...
Correct.
Yeah, for the packet. Okay, so, district office contracts?
District office contracts, um, each year at this time, we take a look at the district office staff and decide how we're going to handle their salaries and contracts. Um, please understand, these aren't union positions, they're not part of the classified collective bargaining, nor are they part of, uh, certified collective bargaining. We have Dennis Burns, who is maintenance supervisor, Cindy Jarvie, who is a food service supervisor, Don Hill, um, administrative receptionist, and Coella, administrative secretary, and June Morgan, the business manager. And I'm asking for the board to consider, uh, three percent increase to the salaries of each of these employees.
Hold on, we have Dennis Burns as maintenance supervisor for the thirteen, fourteen school year. Uh, and so this hourly wage here is, is included as a three percent, right?
Correct.
Uh, so, if you can give a...
Second.
Do you want to mention each one singular or can we read them all together?
Yeah, singularly, their salaries.
Okay, alright. So I have a second, um, discussion?
Uh, nothing against, as far as the positions, I just wanna note again for the record that again, I'm making financial decisions without being able to see any, um, base of the numbers. I mean, again, I'm, I'm, I'm being asked to give out money, but I, I can't have no idea how much we have based off no budget.
One thing, one thing you're gonna find, you'll find it when they have board membership for these textbooks and things we get from OPIA. And they'll tell you that as a board member, you don't have to be a mathematician, you don't have to be a CPA, you don't have to know all the ins and outs of all the financial stuff. What you're, what you really need to do is make sure when you hire a superintendent and administrative people that you get good ones because that's, and, and genie, because that's, that's who's supposed to be doing that. And when, that's why when the superintendent comes to these offices and recommends, or comes to the meeting and he'll recommend we should hire somebody for this position, is because he's sitting right on the, on the budget and he's aware of where that budget is at all times. So when he comes to us and gives us recommendations, we, we trust him if he knows what he's doing. And if you have any questions, uh, before the meeting, you should go in and have him show you and explain it to you. Because none of us can sit here and explain the whole budget, I mean, I can't. I know how it works and everything, but I couldn't sit here and tell you why this and why that and how much we have left. But that's his job. And I depend on him to know what he's doing, so, so what you should do if you're doubting and stuff, go ask him.
Okay, well, before you make that assumption, you should, maybe I'll, I'll CC on all my emails if, if you'd like that. But, um, that's fine, Dorothy, and if that's how you feel that you, as a trustee, wanna do your job, that's fine. I feel it differently after I've read into the, um, uh, obligations of a trustee, and I believe I am supposed to oversee the financial decisions of now, not, not to trust them, to oversee them. And simply by looking at a budget is not asking too much. That is what I believe every school board member in the nation would do. So, thank you, thank you for your advice, and I am following all that protocol, trust me. So that is happening.
We have had a budget and finance committee meeting where a planning budget for next year has been disseminated to those members on that committee. The one thing that it is lacking is the comparison of actuals from previous years.
Black Mountain is working on it, there's this, uh, reports have the four years on it, what's happening is the general vouchers not coming through properly, we're comparing the accounting module to the budget prep module, it's like, like Ms. McGee says, distorted to some degree of some accounts, so we're trying to get that rectified so it all makes sense. But the budget's in there, the proposed budget's in there, and Mrs. Appleby doesn't want us to send electronically until it's finalized anyway, so, once we get this handled, and they've been working on it, instead of flipping it, you're in top of her, she's the one we've been watching with, so...
Okay, so we're getting off topic here, we have a motion on the, um, in a second to hire Mr. Bones. So, uh, any further discussion? Call for a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
I know that we had Cindy Jarvie as a food service supervisor for the thirteen, fourteen school year and the hourly wage of fifteen twenty-one per hour.
Second.
Um, discussion? Call for a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
We had Don Helfel as a personnel receptionist for the fourteen, fourteen school year, a salary of twenty-five seven nine.
Second.
Discussion? Call for a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
We had June Morgan as a business manager of district third for the fourteen, fourteen school year, a salary of forty-six three five zero per year.
Second.
Discussion? Call for a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We had Lizzie Villa as administrative secretary for the thirteen, fourteen school year, a salary of three two thousand four hundred and twenty per year.
Second.
Discussion?
Sorry, just add, why are the numbers just different from the...
Oh, if you go to the next page, the, the number is the current hourly, yeah, the current hourly versus what their new price would be.
Yeah.
I looked at that a couple of times and I went, okay, alright. So, uh, call for a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
So extracurricular?
Um, we have a middle school volleyball coach, and you may recall that she was, she's worked for us in the past as Maloney Dode, and we married her to be Maloney Doti?
Doti.
So it recommended that Maloney is hired on as a middle school volleyball coach for the two thousand thirteen season.
Make a motion to hire Maloney, Maloney Doti as a middle school volleyball coach for the two thousand thirteen season.
Just a second. Discussion? Call for a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, we are at that facility board walkthrough sort of thing, so the question is, do you wanna do that maybe and then have, and then have an order we want?
We can quote, we should do a walkthrough and then come back.
Okay.
If that's okay with everybody.